Good morning, everybody. And I note that the hour has come and that a quorum is present at this council. And council session will come to order. The members, would you please take your seats? Visitors will retire at the seats outside of the row before the proceedings will begin. And I ask all those present to please be mindful of your cellphones and any other devices that will have any kind of interruption in our proceedings today. Today, to give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Chaplain Deborah Thomas of Beth-Sedell Presbyterian Church. She is here today, the guest of Councilman Greenlee. And I would like all members and guests to please rise.
Let us pray. Dear God, first, we want to thank you for the opportunity to come to you on behalf of this body of government here in Philadelphia, the city of brotherly love. We ask for wisdom, guidance, and discernment for these public servants as they go about doing the people's business. We know what happens here affects every person in this city and surrounding suburban and neighbors. That this council represents the least and the greatest of us. We pray that they may be able, if need be, to disagree without being disagreeable, knowing that they are elected by the people to represent them. Bless their staff, who is the backbone of their offices. As we close out 2019, let them realize that the decisions made here will have long-lasting effects into the next decade. We want Philadelphia from this chamber to shine like a beacon to other cities and towns, that others will want to emulate how Philadelphia handles their crises, their expansions, and their day-to-day concerns. All these things we ask from you, who has always been and will continue to remain involved in the affairs of all your children individually and collectively. Amen.
Amen. The chair thanks the chaplain on her invocation today. Councilmen may be at ease. Next order of business will be the approval of the Journal of the Meeting Thursday, October 3rd, 2019. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 3rd, 2019 be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 3rd, 2019, standard approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, aye. Have it. The Journal is approved. The next order of business will be for leaves of absence. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the gentleman. The chair now recognizes Councilman O. Councilman O.
Leave of absence on behalf of the minority?
On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence.
The chair thanks the gentleman. All right, now we will dispense of regular business. And the chair recognizes all guests and visitors who are joining us here in our chambers today. On behalf of the members of the City Council, we all want to welcome you and welcome to our session of council. And we appreciate you taking the time to join us here and participate in our legislative affairs. And we certainly, certainly invite you to join us again. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a resolution recognizing Dr. Walter Palmer. Would Dr. Walter Palmer and those accompanying him please join the Councilwoman at their podium?
[coughs] This is so exciting. You'll step, if you want to stand next to... This is so exciting. Yeah, you'll step, if you want to stand next to... [inaudible] Wow. Councilwoman, you know how to have a party.
Yes, for sure.
Councilwoman on your lead.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for being here. We note that for the remainder of the council session, if you all want to talk among one another, the caucus room will be available. After council, of course, Blonde Reynolds Brown has a meeting, but that will at least give you time to talk one with the other while we are here. My goodness, well...
This is a record.
Yes, it is amazing. I guess he, I think he thought he was having another class in his school. This is a great privilege for me, a great honor for me. I apologize for the Honorable Stanley Strata, Chairman Emeritus of the Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs and Echoes of Africa, because he is in D.C. today, but he sends his love, respect, and his apologies for not being here. Resolution honoring and recognizing the Palmer Foundation for all the great work they have done to bring recognition to African-American stories and fight racism in America and...
Whereas the Palmer Foundation was created by Professor Walter D. Palmer in 1955 to collect information on African-American history and American racism and...
Whereas the Foundation created the Black People's University of Philadelphia Freedom School to develop strategies to fight against racial injustice in America, which included desegregating bandstand at 46th and Market and Paul White man dancers and the mummers blackface and...
Whereas over the last 60 years, Black People's University of Philadelphia founded, organized, sponsored, and supported projects for leadership training in education, community law, business, and politics, as well as fighting against racial segregation and...
Whereas B-Pup founded the original Philadelphia Freedom Theater, first black independent political party, Cope 46, Walter D. Palmer Leadership Partners Charter School, Black People's Unity Movement, Citywide Black Community Council, Society for Preservation for African History, National Association of Black Social Workers, and Philadelphia Citywide Council on Human Rights and...
Whereas the Black People's University of Philadelphia organized the November 1967 Student Strike, Black Power, Black Panther, Anti-War African Diaspora conferences, as well as Temple and Penn Black Studies, Jesse Jackson for President, Anti-Gang Activities, Penn Hospital and CHOP Desegregation, Civil Rights, Afrocentric Freeman Mandela Movements and...
Whereas B-Pup co-sponsored the Black United Fund, Odundee, African-American Museum, Congressional Black Caucus, Black Teachers Roundtable, Pennsylvania Black Political Caucus, Temple and Penn Community Mental Health Programs, African-American and Puerto Rican Day Parades, Black Oak Park and Cobb's Creek Civic Associations, North Philadelphia Model Cities, and Public Health Centers, the SNC Dynamite Case, Black Panthers, Move 78, Move 85, Community Legal Services, Police Abuse, School Choice, Housing Rights, and Charter Schools, and, I know Cody Anderson is going to be proud, the first WDAS Unity Day and... And whereas over the last 60 years, thousands of Philadelphians have benefited from the work of the Palmer Foundation and Black People's University of Philadelphia. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, does hereby honor, recognize, salute, lift up, and celebrate the Palmer Foundation for all of the great and important work they have done to bring recognition to African-American stories and fight racism in America. Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Philadelphia's own Dr. Walter D. Palmer as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's our gratitude, admiration, and recognition. Indeed, you are to be congratulated, Dr. Palmer.
Chair now recognizes Dr. Palmer for remarks.
Thank you very much, council members. I want to thank Councilman Janie Blackwell for initiating this resolution, and I want to thank all the council people who signed off on it. And I just want to note, you have to realize what life was like 60, 65 years ago. There just was not what you see today. There was not the diversity. Blacks were shamed in many, many places. There weren't black conductors on the trolleys and the trains, et cetera. So it's been a long journey. I won't recap it. What I want to tell you is this, that those 65 years legacy materials, two file cabinets have gone to University of Pennsylvania Archives, so that people will be able to study particularly the displacement that Temple, Penn, and Drexel and other universities have done. Eight file cabinets are going to the Charles Bloxen Collection, the largest African-American collection. She's here. Dr. Turner is here, okay? We have six interns working on a number of publications. One publication is called Africa's Gift to the World. That's the African diaspora. Another is called Everything You Need to Know Before Having a Race Discussion If You're For Real. Then another one is Who and Where, Who Were the Indigenous People of the World on All Seven Continents? Another one is Teaching Young People How to Organize for Social Change. And finally, a number of artists got together, black artists in the city, and had put together a program, a comic book, right, using me as a subject. Eric Battle of Marvel Comics put this together. Kenzie Brown was the prime author. But what I want to do is, I want to thank people today. More of this is not for me as much as it is an opportunity for me to thank so many, many people. In those Moot travels, there are thousands and thousands of people that I have been engaged with, who have allowed me to help teach, to teach them, but I've also learned from them, okay? And I shout out today, and I hope some of them are here. I want you to take a look, Sherri Darden, where are you? Put your hand up. Sherri Darden is that young black woman here, is publisher of the Scoop Magazine. We need to save that magazine. Lynn Washington, where are you? Lynn Washington, a writer for the Philadelphia Tribune. The Freedom Fighters, where are you? Freedom Fighters that are here with the Skidmore College, okay? PAN, where's the PAN group, okay? These are folks fighting against drugs and violence in Philadelphia. Black Men at Penn. Black Alumni Activist Council, the John Hope Franklin Society, Malefia Santi's Afrobiology, the House of Umoja with Falakapata. Let's not forget the museum, Africans Holocaust Museum, Legacy Pathways, Charles Bloxen Collection, the Black Women's Health Alliance, Lox Conference, where's the, Dr. Sebree, okay? The Uptown Project, where's Linda? The Uptown Project, the National Association of, NAN, the group that Al Sharpton started, Peoples, I suppose, have been here today, okay? African-American Museum, the Alliance of Black Social Workers. On the other side, students, where are some of the students that are here from the University of Pennsylvania and other places, and these young beautiful children that are down here in front of us right now, okay? The Soldier of Love Foundation, fighting against violence against women. Gerard College was here, are they still here? Jubilee School was right here. Echoes of Africa, Asian-Americans United, Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Affairs, the 1619 African Slavery Committee, which I'm also on, Odundee, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, we're on advisory board there. The Black Comic Book Association with Yumi Odom, okay? And all the different artists we named. The African Alliance of North America, Joffrey Sotoli from South Africa, who was a band out of South Africa in the 1960s, came here to Philadelphia. They told him to hook up with me. For 25 years, we fought the Freeman off of Mandela right here in Philadelphia. Also, be sensitive and supportive of Black Lives Matter, as well as Me Too, okay? Now, I want to say something else to you. I'm a strong believer in community and the elders. No society survives if you don't have the elders. No society survives unless the elders reach down to the youth. We have got to rebuild our communities around the basis of family and community. And children and elders are central to this. Vanessa, oh my God, I was on the political side. Vanessa Kirk, I got them involved in their first demonstrations and picketing, right? And with the caucus in Pennsylvania, most of those guys, right? But I want to say to you that this is for generations, for people who knew me. This young woman over here in the orange shirt, that's my daughter, my oldest daughter. She's 59 years old. She's 59 years old. Where's my son? Where's Walt? Where's Walt? Oh, get out of here. Come over here. Come out of here. Come out of here. This is my oldest son, Walt Jr. He's 64 years old. On Monday, I had my birthday. I'm 85. I'm five years away from 90. But today, I invited somebody who knew me. There's an old saying, that if you live long enough, there won't be anybody remember you when you were in elementary school. She remembers me when I was in elementary school. Cora Hill was born and raised in the Black Bottom, and she is 100 years old in August. That's the connection. That's the connection. She wants to say a couple of words.
All I want to say is there's only one Walt Palmer. And he encouraged me to go back to school, to go to Harrisburg, get my license in those days, just to be a practical nurse. But he has always been behind me as a young man. And he has been a fighter. He'll fight, he would fight for anything, whatever the cause. If it was dog watching, he would fight. Excuse me. And he is really to be honored.
Thank you so much, Deacon. Thanks. I also want to make a note, I was, remember, during the MOVE crisis, I was the chief negotiator in MOVE, the first shootout they had in 67, 68. And I was also negotiating to try to resolve the issue in 1985 in the Osage shootout. I was there, and now, some of the MOVE members, after 40-some years, are coming home. I can tell you that I was there. MOVE did not shoot the first shot. I was standing in the middle of the street, right in front of their house, when I heard a shot, or it sounded like a shot, coming from over my shoulder. At that point, I dropped and hit the ground, because I knew that all hell would break loose. The place was surrounded. And momentarily, right after that, the shooting took place, and the police in front of the building were shooting down into the building. I was watching Sergeant Ramp, who was on the corner by a pole in Pearl Street. MOVE could never have hit him, because their guns were projected at me, right, or in my direction, not at me personally. So the bullets could not have gone around the corner. I've oftentimes said, this is the largest, the greatest travesty in American jurisprudence. They went to jail for 40 years for something they did not commit. Maybe didn't like them because they ran their dogs. Maybe didn't like them because they ate garlic. Maybe didn't like them because they had the compost. Maybe didn't like them because they didn't have glass in their windows. That's a code violation. That's not a bombing violation. And we must take that into account and realize the fact that we have to take responsibility for everything we do. And I'll close by saying this, I would be remiss if I did not note Councilman Lucian Blackwell and his wife, Janie Blackwell, for 40 years of constituent service in the city of Philadelphia. Janie Blackwell, you are the epitome of constituent services. Your attitude, your demeanor, your approach, your way in which you deal with people, you will be sorely missed, but you will never be forgotten. The work that you and Lou did, the groundwork you did, hopefully it's a model for many to come after you. On the political side, I did not purposely forget about Vanessa, but we did a lot of work in getting a lot of people elected, blacks elected in the town. Andrew Corn was one young man we worked with. He became a state legislator for 18 years. David Richardson, he became the youngest person in the history of federal Pennsylvania, becoming elected to state legislature. And we have more and more. A lot of the guys in here, Kurt will oftentimes tell you about me, like I said before, lassoing him and pulling him into demonstrations and picketing. Yes, a lot of picketing, a lot of demonstration. And I'll tell you something, I went to jail in 67 for closing down the school district of Philadelphia to save our children. And at 85 or 90, I'd be wanting to go to jail again to save our babies. We must all count in to save our children. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. So council can do its business, I would ask any of our guests that are here to walk across the hallway into the caucus room for a few minutes, so we can convene, okay? So we can do, thank you, City Council. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmen will be at ease.
I was, remember during the MOVE crisis, I was the chief negotiator in MOVE, the first shootout they had in sixty-seven, sixty-eight. And I was also negotiating to try to resolve the issue in nineteen eighty-five in the Osage Shootout. I was there, and now some of the MOVE members, after forty-some years, are coming home. I can tell you that I was there. MOVE did not shoot the first shot.
Thank you.
I was standing in the middle of the street, right in front of their house, when I heard a shot, or it sounded like a shot, coming from over my shoulder. At that point, I dropped and hit the ground because I knew that all hell would break loose. The place was surrounded. And momentarily, right after that, the shooting took place, and the police in front of the building were shooting down into the building. I was watching Sergeant Ramp, who was on the corner by a pole in Pearl Street. MOVE could never have hit him because their guns were projected at me, right, or in my direction, not at me personally. So the bullets could not have gone around the corner. I've oftentimes said, this is the largest, the greatest travesty in American jurisprudence. They went to jail for forty years for something they did not commit. Maybe they didn't like them because they ran their dogs. Maybe they didn't like them because they ate garlic. Maybe they didn't like them because they had the compost. Maybe they didn't like them because they didn't have glass in their windows. That's a code violation. That's not a bombing violation. And we must take that into account and realize the fact that we have to take responsibility for everything we do. And I'll close by saying this. I would be remiss if I did not note Councilman Lucian Blackwell and his wife, Janie Blackwell, for forty years of constituent service in the city of Philadelphia. Janie Blackwell, you are the epitome of constituent services. Your attitude, your demeanor, your approach, your way in which you deal with people, you will be sorely missed, but you will never be forgotten. The work that you and Lou did, the groundwork you did, hopefully it's a model for many to come after you. On the political side, I did not purposely forget about Vanessa, but we did a lot of work in getting a lot of people elected, blacks elected in the town. Andrew Corn was one young man we worked with. He became a state legislator for eighteen years. David Richardson, he became the youngest person in the history of Philadelphia Pennsylvania, becoming elected to state legislature. And we have more and more. A lot of the guys in here, Kurt will oftentimes tell you about me, like I said before, lassoing him and pulling him into demonstrations and picketing. Yes, a lot of picketing, a lot of demonstration. And I'll tell you something. I went to jail in sixty-seven for closing down the school district of Philadelphia to save our children. And at eighty-five or ninety, I'd be willing to go to jail again to save our babies. We must all count in to save our children. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. So council can do its business, I would ask any of our guests that are here to walk across the hallway into the caucus room for a few minutes so we can convene, okay? So we can do. Thank you, City Council. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Council will be at ease.
At this time... At this time, the Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who would present a resolution recognizing Christian Dunbar. Would Mr. Dunbar and those accompanying him please join the Councilwoman at the podium?
Thank you very much. This is a special pleasure and privilege for me. We have the first African-born, he's from Liberia, treasurer for the city of Philadelphia. Yes, let us honor it. And let me say that he worked with the African community and the entire city even before coming our city treasurer. He's active in Echoes of Africa, the Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs, that we co-founded these in two thousand and two thousand and five. And he is a person that you can call on for any issues. He understands, he's down to earth, and he's willing to help anybody with any issues. And certainly, it doesn't have to be technical finance issues, but any issues with regard to city financing. We've called on him many, many times, and we are very, very grateful and blessed to be here for this presentation.
And I too want to say it's truly an honor and a privilege to have this opportunity to recognize Christian Dunbar as a treasurer here in the city of Philadelphia. He's also played a major role in helping the city of Philadelphia recover, what is that, what, thirty million, something along those lines? Thirty-three million to be exact. And so we thank you for your dedication and your public service. Recognizing and honoring Christian Dunbar on his appointment as the city treasurer of Philadelphia. Whereas on June the seventeenth of two thousand and nineteen, Mayor Jim Kenny announced his appointment of Christian Dunbar as city treasurer, succeeding Rashia Johnson and...
Whereas, Mr. Dunbar was a deputy treasurer for the city of Philadelphia since two thousand and fourteen. In this role, he was responsible for the issuance of all notes and bonds on behalf of the city's general fund and enterprise funds used to finance capital projects and...
Whereas additionally, Mr. Dunbar serves as a mayoral appointee and chairman of the Philadelphia Land Bank Board of Directors. He also serves as an advisor to the United States Agency for International Development, known as USAID, and the World Bank Group for the Advancement of Capital Market Development, Structured Product Development, and Governance in Emerging Markets. And whereas prior to joining the city, Mr. Dunbar was a wealth manager with Wells Fargo Advisors. So he is exceedingly equipped. In that capacity, he has managed investments and credit products for high net worth individuals, institutions, and public entities. Mr. Dunbar has also advised several African governments on fiscal and monetary policy and...
Whereas, Mr. Dunbar has presented at conferences in the U.S., Canada, Africa, and Europe on topics including capital market development, emerging market risk, and environmental, social, and governance impact and...
Whereas, Mr. Dunbar earned his BA from Temple University. At Temple University, he was an athlete. He was named the most valuable player and captain of the football team and...
Whereas Dunbar is of Liberian descent, his maternal grandfather, William V. S. Tuttman, served as president of Liberia for twenty-seven years. And we did not know until today that Mr. Dunbar is also a descendant of American abolitionist and humanitarian Harriet Tubman. He lives in West Philadelphia with his wife and two children.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors Christian Dunbar on his appointment as city treasurer.
Listen, most importantly of all, it's further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the city treasurer, Christian Dunbar, as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition.
The Chair now recognizes Mr. Dunbar for remarks.
Thank you very much. First off, I want to thank Councilwoman Blackwell for honoring me. I want to thank this whole body as well for honoring me. And I'd be remiss not to thank Dr. Palmer, who was just up here. It is his shoulder that many of us stand on to allow us to do what we do today. I would also like to thank the mayor and Rob DeBoe for entrusting the city's debt portfolio, investment portfolio in my hands. I'd also like to thank, really, the tremendous staff that we have in city treasury. As the Councilmen mentioned, we were able to reconcile the thirty-three million dollars, and it was really through their hard work over time that we were able to do that in a timely manner. I'd also like to thank my predecessor, Rashia Johnson, who really led that effort and who is now in the private sector. But I want to thank her for her many years of counsel that we worked together, you know, to reconcile and to do all the things we did. I certainly also want to thank many of the members of council who I've leaned on throughout the years for some level of counsel. Councilman Johnson, Councilman Green, you know, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Dom, you know, Councilwoman Bass, and all the other council members who really have, you know, taken my calls over the years, whenever I've had an issue or needed to talk to someone. And I'd also be remiss if I did not recognize Shadé Lewis, who was a previous city treasurer, who is of Nigerian descent, you know, and she, I think many of the members of this body know her very, very well. Lastly, I'd like to thank my wife and my two little ones. If it wasn't for her support, I would not be allowed to be the public servant and put all the years, all the hours that we're able to put in to serve the citizens of Philadelphia. So, and with that, I just want to thank everyone here, and I really appreciate it. I'd also like to just quickly thank some of the professionals in the industry that really helped the city do what the city needs to do. It's a complicated market, a complicated industry, and the professionals that we work with on a daily basis help make the market efficient. Thank you very much.
Council will be at ease. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant at Arms please deliver the message for the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read the messages from the mayor?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body. An ordinance amending Chapter seventeen, fourteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Non-Competitively-Bid Contracts: Financial Assistance by making revisions to definitions, to contract and reporting requirements, to exceptions, and to enforcement provisions, and making related changes to Section twenty-six thirteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Ethics Related Matters Incorporated as Part of This Chapter. And an ordinance amending Chapter seventeen, fourteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Non-Competitively-Bid Contracts: Financial Assistance to provide for regulations and for special provisions for certain small-dollar contracts, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the Journal. Mr. Decker, will you please read any other communications in your possession?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The next order of business will be the introductions of bills and resolutions. Mr. Decker, would you please recognize Councilwoman Londell Reynolds Brown?
Good morning. Good morning. I offer no bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. I likewise have no bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. On behalf of Council President Clark, I offer one bill.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Section nine-two-zero-five of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending along certain portions of Spring Garden Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan, which is myself. I have no bills or resolutions. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reckon I have one resolution and two, one resolution and an ordinance on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Mr. Decker.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Moore Street, Twenty-Sixth Street, Moore Street, and Twenty-Seventh Street.
Refer to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming Segal Street between Twenty-First and Twenty-Second Streets Vendetta Grimes Way.
Next week's calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez. Councilman Green.
Thank you. On behalf of Councilwoman Sanchez, I have two privileged resolutions. On behalf of the administration, I have two bills, and on my behalf, I have two bills as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was just my resolution being signed off by Councilwoman Brown.
Duly noted for the record. Thank you. Mr. Decker.
A privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Aging to Hold Public Hearings Examining Solutions to Prevent the Ongoing Displacement of Senior Citizens with Fixed Incomes Due to Rising Rental Costs.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage. Mr. Decker.
An ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to Provide for Height Allowance for Certain Solar Collectors.
Will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Subcode A of Title four of the Philadelphia Code to Provide for Fees for Solar Panel Projects.
Refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter seventeen, fourteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Non-Competitively-Bid Contracts: Financial Assistance by Making Revisions to Definitions.
Refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter seventeen, fourteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Non-Competitively-Bid Contracts: Financial Assistance to Provide for Regulations and for Special Provisions for Certain Small Dollar Contracts.
Will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And... A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the dedicated and loyal service of Ramilo L. Diaz Jr. to the city of Philadelphia.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Rebecca Rutstein for her dedicated service through art to the city of Philadelphia.
Will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two resolutions today, different from what was noted during caucus, Mr. Chair. One is privileged and one is non-privileged. The non-privileged is cosponsored by Councilmembers Sanchez, Johnson, Jones, Green, and Greenlee. And the privileged is cosponsored by Councilmembers Clark, Johnson, Heenan, Jones, Dom, Gim, Ta- Taubenberger, and just those two. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Will be reflected on the record? Thank you, Councilwoman.
And Mr. Chairman, after the title of the non-privileged resolution is read, I wish to be recognized, and then after the titles of both resolutions have been read, I wish to be recognized again to speak on them.
Thank you.
A non-privileged resolution calling for a fair contract for non, for commercial office cleaners and building service workers in Philadelphia.
That will be placed on next council sessions. That will be placed on next, okay, before we, okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It has been moved and properly second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, the ayes have it, it will be placed on today's final.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings regarding service providers and employers honoring existing and prior worker contract agreements.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to again thank cosponsors Sanchez, Johnson, Jones, Greenlee, and Green for the resolution that calls for a fair contract for commercial office cleaners and building service workers in Philadelphia. Prior to starting council, thank you, Council President. We had a press conference with them today just to note that we stand in solidarity with them. The second authorizes the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings regarding service providers and employers honoring existing and prior worker contract agreements. Unfortunately, these resolutions are related around a common theme relative to employers in their efforts to cut costs and make a profit at the expense of their employees. We know that yesterday, the three thousand commercial office cleaners and building service workers took the courageous stance and they took a strike vote. And if they don't get a fair contract by this coming Tuesday, they will strike. Their demands aren't extreme, they just want what all working individuals want, and that's fair wages with good health care and retirement security. The second resolution is one that I hope folks have been paying attention to, and there have been three recent high-profile cases that brought this issue to the forefront. An example one, Vita Healthcare Group assumed ownership of the Somerton Center and Spring Garden Center nursing home facilities. As the new owners, they slashed wages by more than thirty percent for some workers and made health care practically unaffordable by instituting a ten-thousand-dollar deductible. After many months and much activism by the nursing home workers and... After many months and much activism by the nursing home workers and public officials, Vida Healthcare Group and the workers were able to reach a fair union contract that made access to health care attainable and set fair wages. The second example is Sedexo, a major facilities management corporation with contracts throughout Philadelphia. They had a contract to provide environmental services at Honeman University Hospital. According to the contract, the workers, who are also members of District Council 1199C, they had a right to earn both sick and personal time. However, when Sedexo lost the contract in 2018, they refused to pay out that earned and sick time to the members of District 1199C. According to calculations, the workers are owed over $218,000 in compensation from Sedexo in connection to both earned and sick time. And in the most recent example, which was just brought to my attention in the past week or so, members of the Pennsylvania Association of Staff Nurses and Allied Professionals, PASNAP, they are currently facing uncertainty at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children. The hospital's new owners, Tower Health and Drexel University, have indicated that they do not intend to recognize the collective bargaining agreement. In particular, they have conveyed that they plan to alter the staffing levels that the members fought hard to achieve and which are critical to providing the kind of care that the children at the hospital needs. In all of these examples, they're all in the health care realm. This practice is unfortunately happening across many industries. In the era of frequent outsourcing, acquisitions, and mergers, it is increasingly common for service providers and employers to refuse to honor existing and prior worker contract agreements despite already having existing laws on the books. We need to explore if, how, and under what terms can these laws be better enforced and/or strengthened to protect workers. We also know that we have a long way to go in ensuring that we have economic justice in our great city of Philadelphia, but both of these resolutions, we believe, are a step in the right direction, and we look forward to getting the facts on the record. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, colleagues, for all of your patience in allowing me to communicate very specifically so nothing is misunderstood what the goals and objectives of both of these resolutions are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman, and this resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing the 95th anniversary of the Curtis Institute of Music, its part in training the world's finest musicians, and for its contributions to the rich cultural fabric of the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have one bill, and I'd like to be recognized after the reading of the bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 6 of the Philadelphia Code, the Health Code, to add a section establishing requirements for hospitals that anticipate closing.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Over the summer, the for-profit hedge fund owner of Honeman Hospital rocked this city with the abrupt closure of a vital Philadelphia institution that served tens of thousands of patients and employed thousands of workers. The closure announcement was made in mid-June, and Honeman was basically closed by September. Today, 10 of us introduce a bill to make sure Philadelphia will never again be left out of critical decisions that impact the lives of our neediest residents. I want to thank Councilmember Heenan and my council cosponsors Greenly, Parker, Johnson, Blackwell, Squilla, Jones, Dom, and Green for backing this. This bill effectively codifies into law an existing 1969 Board of Health Regulation that required advance notice for closure of hospitals and medical facilities. What we want to make sure is that the time that we get, this bill will require six months advance notice and require hospitals to work with the city on planning that ensures the appropriate and safe transition for patients and helps staff members land on their feet. In the poorest large city in the nation, Honeman was a critical safety net hospital, which saw 50,000 patients a year going through its ER. It was one of six maternity wards left in the City of Philadelphia. When it announced its maternity ward closure with days, only days' notice, it left 800 moms-to-be with precious little time to find other options. Thousands of patients were also left in the dark. 3,500 employees, some of whom had been with the hospital for decades, lost their jobs. Hundreds of doctors who had trained for years for a placement at a major city institution had to scramble to find other options. And it's a telling sign of the downward spiral of health care in America today that a hedge fund owner named Joel Friedman teamed up with a real estate company to buy Honeman in the first place. Over the next 18 months, he quickly drained it of its assets as he extracted every ounce of profit. And it's worth noting that Mr. Friedman, as he readies the Center City Hospital for a massive sale, has already bought a $7 million Los Angeles home, it's his second, in that city as a bonus. But the harsh realities and destructive practices of a ruthless for-profit health care market means cities have to step up in our protections and demand for transparency. There are dozens of hospitals across the state of Pennsylvania that are in worse financial shape than Honeman right now. National statistics indicate that 1 in 5 rural hospitals will close or consolidate in the coming years. It is my belief that we need Medicare for All and an end to the ruthless for-profit mentality around health care that puts all of our lives at risk, but in the meantime, we're offering this bill as a reminder that Philadelphians can't afford to wait this out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Mr. Decker. Councilman Taubinberger.
Chairman Heenan, I have one resolution, which after the title is read, I would like to make comment.
Sure.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold a hearing regarding the reconstruction work on Interstate 95 and the entire revive I-95 plan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Thank you, Chairman Heenan. I would like to thank the cosponsors here of Councilmembers Dom, Bass, Squilla, Greenly, Parker, Gim, and O'Neill. And basically, why I'm doing this, this work is far behind schedule. The construction is frustrating many, many people. I would hope these hearings alleviate some of this so we have a clear understanding. The considerable delay in completing the much-needed repairs and improvements of I-95 is inconveniencing thousands of commuters on a daily basis, some of which don't even live in the City of Philadelphia. The gridlock is leading to many accidents, road rage, and much-frayed nerves. It is my sincere hope that these hearings will serve as a catalyst to get the work done, and finally, all of us who sit on I-95 traffic every day deserve better than this. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you.
Sponsored by all members of council.
A non-privileged resolution also naming the 200 block of West Colter Street as Reverend Dr. Allen E. Waller Way.
That'll be placed on next week's final passage. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I introduce one non-privileged resolution, cosponsored by Councilmember Bass, and I'd like to be heard after the title is read.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the establishment of a special committee on child separation in Philadelphia to review child separation in Philadelphia's child welfare system and develop recommendations to ensure compliance with state child protective services law to protect children and due process rights of families and prevent the unnecessary breakup of families.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. This resolution will be placed on today's final calendar.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Decker, are there any other bills or resolutions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The next order of business will be reports from the committee. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you. Thank you. Hold on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Finance reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, which is referred Bill Number 190509, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 19, 200 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "City Funds, Deposits, Investments, Disbursements", by revising the list of city depositories. And Bill Number 190706, entitled an ordinance authorizing the issuance from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds to provide funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the City of Philadelphia, authorizing the mayor, city controller, and city solicitor, or a majority of them, to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, setting forth the purposes for which the proceeds of the bonds will be expended, providing for the maturities and for other terms and conditions, and for the form of the bonds, providing that the bonds may be redeemable prior to maturity, providing sinking funds for the bonds and for appropriation to the sinking fund commission for the payment thereof, authorizing agreements to provide credit enhancement or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds, and certain other actions. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, I return the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 190509 and 190706.
It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Numbers 190509 and 190706. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla. Were any bills or resolutions for introduction today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from the committee will, with suspension of the rules, have been deemed to have first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendars for the next session of council. If there is no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly for a motion concerning considering the bills on the second reading and final passage calendars today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars. Bill Numbers 160026A, 190608A, 190130, 190714, 19... I'm sorry, 181047, 190101, 190552, 190556, 190561, 190609, 190642, 190643, 190646, 190647, 190648, 190656, 190657, 190705, and 190703.
Please, a second? It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Greenly. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenly for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendars today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions of bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars. They are Numbers 190769. And all other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. That brings us to our public comment. Before considering the resolutions of bills, we consider the public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern the matters of the second reading and final passage calendars for today's actions in today's council session. All speakers must sign up to testify. If you haven't already signed up for today's session, please do so to my left by giving your name to the Sergeant at Arms at the table. You will be called to order in which your name appears on the sign-in sheet, and you will have two minutes today, due to the amount of volume, two minutes today to speak. In order to be fair for all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithful to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light at the podium. There will be 30 seconds remaining to your time. The light will then turn yellow, which is a reminder to conclude your remarks. Once your two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and Sergeant Arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker because we do have a lot of speakers on today's public comment. And I will also reserve the right to our rules of council to limit the repetition comments on the subject matter. I will ask the Chief Clerk, please read the name of our first speaker.
Commenting on 170408.
Good morning to everyone, to the council, to the president, to the members here, and the people in the audience. My name is Harry Barnum. I'm a deaf advocate at Liberty Resources. I'm here to mention something on 170408. This resolution I don't want to complain about, but I think this resolution has been waiting for a year, and the committee has done nothing about it. You must finish the old business. It's been put off far too long. It's been a year, and as I look to that goal, I see what's happening. What are you doing? What is happening? I don't want to complain, but I feel it's my job to behoove you to do something. It is old business. It's been waited too long. What are we... I just keep hearing you say over and over, talk about different numbers, and this one has never been resolved. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Hello, members of City Council. My name is Daniel Simmons. I'm an educator at the Franklin SLA campus of the Philadelphia School District and a PFT member of the Caucus Working Educators. I want to teach today. Education is my life's work. My students ought to be in class right now, but that's not possible because the Philadelphia School District has led our campus into a preventable crisis due to mismanagement, lack of transparency, and failure to meaningfully engage stakeholders over the course of the entire project. As our asbestos cloud of a school is but one example of the citywide toxic schools and unequal treatment that brings me here today. What can we do to heal? I have three simple requests. I call upon city councils who investigate the mishandling of the Franklin SLA project that has more than 1,000 students out of school for two weeks and counting.
I'm going to have to interrupt for a second. If you... And this is a good reminder for all those who are coming for public testimony, would you please state the number of the bill in which you are authorized to speak on?
It's the school suspension bill because the school district has suspended us from school. Let me look it up and listen. 174048, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright. So my three recommendations are quite simple. We need a hearing to investigate what's gone wrong at our project, led by the city controller. That includes after-school public hearings. And taxpayers should know how $37 million and counting has been mismanaged by this school district. A second, simple request: There should be an establishment immediately of a special committee on school facilities to address lead and asbestos in all of Philadelphia's schools. District and state officials should be made to answer questions, to develop plans to prevent cancer and other endangerments that pervade the buildings students and families and teachers are told to trust is safe. The school district clearly worries about bad press, but has not done the work of admitting to and solving the actual problem. Lastly, council, I urge you to visit schools in your own districts and in the poorest zip codes of Philadelphia. Shadow a child, learn their experience, and then ask me if my request for a truth-telling investigation is unreasonable. Some problems are complex, take a lot of time and money to solve. Telling the truth doesn't cost a dime.[672.32][672.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Commenting on 170408.
I'm commenting on 170408. Monday is Indigenous Peoples' Day, so I'd first like to take a moment to honor the fact that we are here on uprooted Lenape land. My name is Elizabeth Cesarini, and I'm here to support council members Reynolds, Brown, and Jim in their resolution calling on and urging the school district of Philadelphia to permanently prohibit the suspension of elementary-age students from first through fifth grades. Kindergarten, too, maybe? And keeping young people in their schools should be all of our first priorities. I'm also here because we have heard that our neighborhood school is in danger of being uprooted. I work as an ELL coordinator at Alney Charter High School. In the nine years I've worked here under ASPIRA, I've seen the English Language Learner Program grow from about 40 students in 2011 to 678, as of now, 681, as of today. An increase of 1,595% in nine years. This is due to the strength of our student center programming, our dedicated unionized teachers, our amazing staff, and the choice more and more families continue to make every day to trust their students to grow in our school. Our students and families have been uprooted by climate change, economic devastation, trauma, and war from the Caribbean, Central America, the Middle East, Southeast Asia, Africa, and across the United States. They have since put down roots in the Alney Neighborhood and across Philadelphia. Our students and families cite programs like College Access, Peer Mediation, our ELL program, our Athletic Department, band, music, art, our large Special Education Department, all of our caring and compassionate teachers and staff as the reason they enroll and keep coming to school. These roots have not been easy to cultivate. In a city-state and country that would often rather raise what exists than nurture what is already growing, we at Alney Charter High School urge you to support our efforts to put down strong roots in our land and create a better life for our students, family, staff, and community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before I ask the Chief Clerk to read the next three speakers, again, I just want to remind everybody, you know, we do have a lot on our agenda here today in public comment. Please, alright, given a little bit of flexibility on subject matters, stick to the subject on the bills that you're speaking on final passage. So, Mr. Decker, please read the name of the next three speakers.
Claire Cynthia Louise Charles.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Claire Cynthia Louise Charles. I'm talking in Number 170408. And the resolution calling, or in urging the school district of Philadelphia to permanently prohibit the suspension of elementary-age students from the first through fifth grade. I don't think that's fair, because they are little kids, and I don't think they know what they're doing. It's just like the first, first to fifth grade. And also, I'm here to talk in favor of Alney Charter High School. And I love the school, because it gave us, it gave you opportunity to learn whatever you want to do, and there's a lot of club you can, you could participate in. And Alney Charter High School, the teacher always looked at you in the same way as others. They never discriminated you, and they're not biased. I'm in 11th grade right now, and I've seen a lot of changing going in the school. I can tell, because I'm in the school since ninth grade. For example, there's something we call Trojan. They've been helping students. I said that, because when I was in ninth grade, there was only 10 Trojan, and other students see that. The Trojan have more good stuff, so they make effort to become one. A student, they used to have a lot of fight, but not anymore. The students are changing from bad to good. Before, we were the worst school of all, but not anymore. Second example, transportation. Students that live near Alney Charter High School are happy, because they don't have to take, they don't have to take, like, buses. I always ask many students if change from Alney to other school, it would be difficult. They say yes, because they have to take train to get another school. And I don't think they should close their school, because the teacher will love the student. Thank you for your attention.[998.63][998.63](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker.
Good afternoon, citizens and honorable council. My name is Sharon Bryant. Thank you for this opportunity. As a longtime Philadelphia School District educator, I want to testify on Resolution 170408 regarding school suspensions. Under normal circumstances, I'd oppose excessive suspensions of students, because we know it's critical for them to physically be present in school in order for them to be able to learn. But unfortunately, my students and colleagues being physically present at the Louis C. Cassidy Elementary School, number one, in disrepair in the school district, is like sending them to the slaughterhouse. I just found out this morning that there are now students wearing doctor-ordered masks. So again, after, in The Inquirer's Toxic School series, and in Shades of America's Environmental Injustice series, this morning, I come crying out to you to suspend everybody from Cassidy, both the students and the staff.[1076.58][1076.58](APPLAUSE). Put everybody out. They should have been out of there really a long time ago, long before I arrived in 2016. Now it's almost 2020, and they're still over there breathing toxic air, being exposed to mold, lead, and asbestos. I hear that my classroom 302 may have been condemned. My exposures there caused me numerous respiratory illnesses that I'd never had before a day in my life. There are now only seven teachers remaining at Cassidy from the time I went out injured on duty a year and a half ago. They left due to illness, early retirement, and a plethora of voluntary transfers. The job of teaching nowadays is hard enough in and of itself, so suffering under both toxic environmental and psychological conditions proves to be too much. I already know your answer, there's no money. So that's the task at hand. We have to find the money. We have to figure out a way to address the toxic lead and asbestos conditions across all affected schools in our aging society. I thank you.[1144.58][1144.58](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for your, thank you. Mr. Decker, our next three speakers, please. We're next, let's go next two.
Followed by Joshua Block. Followed by David Ivory.
Can I proceed? Good morning, council members. My name is Mintron. I'm Benjamin Franklin High School, a Class of 2017 alum, and was also a youth coordinator at Vidley. I'm here to speak on Resolution Number 170408 about school suspensions. I think we need to give students more time in classrooms, not taking it away through suspensions. Speaking of taking away student time in classroom, I'm sure that you all have heard about the thousand of students from Benjamin Franklin High School and Science Leadership Academy missing school for more than 10 days due to asbestos in their schools. The school, this show Philadelphia, has spent $37 million on a project to merge Benjamin Franklin High School and SOA into one building. The project did not meet any planned deadline and was rushed through the process so that students can be in the building by this school year. As a result of that, students from Benjamin Franklin High School had to attend school days during constructions for the past 18 months, but the problems have existed long before. So I went to Benjamin Franklin High School from 2014 to 2017. As one of many neighborhood schools across the city, we don't get much funding attentions and transparency from the school districts. When I was still in there, every day I would be in the classroom, lunchroom, and hallways that have been, that have peeling lead paint falling from walls and pipes. There are water fountains that have do not drink signs on it. And I learned that later on that asbestos has been present in the building at an alarm level. At first, I questioned myself, why did this problem exist, and no one have done anything about it? Over the years, I learned that because we are used to crumbling conditions and having to survive in the least amount of resources, we normalize these conditions. And the people in power also normalize them. In fact, Dr. Height repeatedly cited that Philly is an old city, and old buildings have lead. And if we didn't have noticed already and have been reminding from people, we don't even spend much of their time in the toxic school conditions. As an alum alive from, as an alum from Benjamin Franklin High School, I urge you to, one, pass a resolutions for an immediate investigation at the misleading of the district into multimillion taxpayer dollars, construction power, preventing an SOA building that's more than 1,000 students out of school for more than 10 days.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony, sir. We're going to have to stick to our time.
And pass a resolution to immediately establish special committee on school facilities to address and lead.
Sergeant Orms. Mr. Decker, could you please read our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the council. My name is Joshua Block. I'm a parent of school district, two school district students. I'm a teacher at Science Leadership Academy, and currently I stand before you instead of teaching my students, because today that is not an option. I'm speaking in response to 170408, and like many before me, I would like to express that removing students from school does not move people closer to education goals. And like many people before me, I need to connect this issue to what is going on in every, not every, in many other places in our school district. The most recent crisis is not an isolated incident. The conditions are something that many school communities are dealing with at this very moment. This is a problem of infrastructure, but it is also a problem of governance and oversight. There's no denying the funding issues the district faces. There's no denying, as well, the dysfunctional ways decisions are currently made, and the deliberate ways the school district avoids transparency. For these reasons, I ask you to step in by investigating the enormous public health and infrastructure failure of the Ben Franklin SLA campus project. We need to know why this was handled so incompetently. We need to know how many children in Philadelphia, how many children currently in Philadelphia have construction going on in their schools. We need to know how many young people are continually exposed to toxic conditions in their pursuit of education. Finally, we need you to visit schools. We need you to spend time with students during their days and be more connected to the reality of schools in our city. Thank you very much.[1453.47][1453.47](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker.
David Ivory.
Good morning. My name is David Ivory. I'm a Grammy-nominated recording engineer, music producer, and the director of the Sound Recording and Music Technology Program at Montgomery County Community College, and most importantly, the chair of the Philadelphia Music Industry Task Force. I'm here to testify on Bill 160026-A with regards to musicians having access to load in and out, load in and out of certain venues without getting ticketed. The music community has many struggles, including performing in the city. We have a strong musical heritage here in Philadelphia, but musicians and artists of today that will create that future musical heritage are consistently in danger of being muted with policies that face them. From lack of local venues to perform in, to feeling among most people that music is free, musicians and artists facing a daunting challenge to make a living in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. One of the low-hanging fruit that the Music Industry Task Force identified to help the music community is Bill 160026-A. This bill would provide some relief to musicians trying to start their careers here in the city. How? Well, for a start, oftentimes bands and individual musicians get a parking ticket just for loading into their gear to perform their show. The little money that they will make that night becomes the payment for the parking ticket, which then makes their performance essentially free, if not in the red. This bill would provide loading zones to make it safe and free from getting a ticket just for loading in their musical equipment to the venue. I've been a music producer and music professional for more than 35 years, and the ability for startup bands or just independent musicians to play and perform in the city have been made harder and harder, year in and year out. This bill would provide at least some relief and be a great step forward to helping these startup artists and musicians perform in this great music city. I urge the City Council to vote to make this bill a reality, so we can show that the city still supports our great heritage as well as the future music makers. Thank you.[1592.41][1592.41](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next three speakers, please.
Jesse Lundey. Followed by Dr. Louise Anthony Delise. Followed by Joe Dennehyel.
My name is Jesse Lundey. I've been a concert promoter here in Philadelphia for 24 years. I book over 200 shows a year in the city in a variety of venues. I'm here to testify today about Bill 160026-A with regard to what Mr. Ivory said just before. This bill will offer relief to the musicians who often aren't making enough money to pay the parking ticket that they might get. We, with the Music Industry Task Force, are interested in helping continue the pilot program that was started before our organization formed, to create spaces outside of venues in a few of the venues here in town, basically just to see how it works, and to help streamline and make that process work for both the city, the parking authority, the venues themselves. This will not only take weight off of the shoulders of the musicians as they hurry to get their equipment into the venues, it also takes weight off of the venue staff who are otherwise standing watch for parking authority people to come along and write a ticket. So we urge you to please help us make this a reality. We at the Music Industry Task Force are interested in keeping musicians coming to Philadelphia and keeping them happy while they're here. Thank you.[1690.03][1690.03](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. This is an official decree of the people in remitting damnous quorwarto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably unlawfully. Last week, I heard multiple testimonies of government officials taking children without permission. I testified to government stealing my home, stealing my just compensation. Council's response was to unlawfully reduce public testimony from five minutes to two minutes. If committing one crime one time, we'll lay persons in jail. Why haven't officials been prosecuted? If officials lied to God in their oath of office, how can constituents reelect them? The Constitution's require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 98-2, 98-3, 98-5, 98-6, 98-7. 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384. PA Constitution Articles 1, Sections 1 through 28. 26 P.A. CSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716. And other laws listed in SCOTUS 1589, 616. in SCOTUS 1589, 65, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 USC 98-2 property rights for twenty-five years is egregious, extraordinary oath filing, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-all government must have its charter governed revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow this weekly monumental corruption.
Mr. Decker, you please read our next three speakers, please.
Commenting on 190779, Antoinette Richardson, Cortez Johnson, Adelaida Morales. Please approach the podium.
Hello. Hi. I would like to thank this opportunity for speaking on behalf of 190779. One, I also want to thank council members, O and B, for bringing this, um, bringing this up to, this resolution up to, for DHS to be accountable for what they actions. Now, my daughter has been taken from me nine, six years ago. And they have committed so many crimes against our children that our children and parents are dying daily. For the, so this needs to be, uh, this needs to be, um, brought to justice. Amen? So the welfare system needs to be accountable for what they have done to our children. If you are for our children, if you say, if you say you're for our children, then this resolution needs to be passed. They are our future, and they need our help. My child, I never seen my child for six years. I don't even know if she's alive or dead because of DHS. Um, excuse me, I'm sorry. But I reassure you this, we have so many people fighting on our behalf. So if you are against this resolution, I'm gonna ask you this. Will your children be taken by DHS? Will you cry of your grandchildren because they were taken? This is what I, this is why I'm saying, bring this resolution to pass, do not oppose this, okay? Thank you.
My name is Cortez Johnson, and I'm a tenth grader at SLA. I have no school today because my school has asbestos. I'm worried and, I'm worried and stressed more about not being able to see my sister. Next week is her birthday, and I probably won't get to see her. You see, the social worker last week changed my visit to Friday at 3:30. I get out of school at 3:05, which is at Broad, Broad and Spring Garden, after travel to 50th and Parkside. We usually go Wednesdays at 3:30, which is good, because I get out of school at 1:00 PM. The social worker will not give us a consistent schedule. I have done nothing wrong, why can't my sister live with me? I can count how many times I have seen my sister since DHS took us. Seven times in three years, only for one hour. I live with my, I live with my aunt, and we have space. I should not have to go to some place twice a month to see her. There is no special committee to address child separation. Can you help the children and vote yes for Resolution 190779? I have no vote, I have no vote, just a voice. Thank you.
So should I say the number first? So the reason that I'm here is for the bill that I am here is to speak about the family separation and stop protective service. Keeping families can, can hurt and is very important to me, and also it could hurt the community too. So let me get to the bottom of this. So hi, by the way, my name is Adelaida Morales. I have taken, attended a special job at St. Chartered School and one that is now attended Alany Chartered School. The school not only helped my kids educate them, but it has created leaders in our community. Children are different in all aspects, some need more attention than other. What St. Alany offer is more than any other school has offered to my children and the community. Beginning with the, the staff, these people love their children. They're more than just teachers, they're mentor, they're friends, family. We have a community center. Clothing, we offer washer-dries, full bank, household items, care, access to computer, a vunor emergency uniform. All you hear is people talking about PSSA testing, what about a children's failing? Yes, PSSA testing, some of the childrens come from Elkin and Crown reading and writing in kindergarten, first grade level. Are we holding them accountable for it? I speak at John B. St. Chartered School, has not only helped my children, but have also helped me. I was always shy and wouldn't imagine talking in front of anyone like I'm doing now. John B. St. Chartered School staff has empowered me by providing me with many other and parents' training, parenting classes, cooking training, family conference, and so many. So I'm gonna skip to the last. I always say, if you don't walk the shoes, you don't have the right to talk. One more minute. As parent, I'm involved, I know it's working, why try to fix something that is already John B. St. has offered the community center in a school in North Philadelphia, we're the only one, that has a full bank.
Mr. Decker, would you please read the names of our next three speakers, please? Our next three speakers.
Mel, Meltrita Cress, followed by April McBride, followed by Nasir Kabres. Please approach the podium.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Meltrita Cress. I'm speaking on behalf of Resolution Number 190779. I've sat here, I've stood here several times telling you my story. I'm not here for that today. Today, I'm gonna read a, um, a post comment that came from a social worker that works for one of the COAs. As a supervisor and teaming at one of the COAs, I can tell you that we have sometimes, not always, seen very sloppy work. Social workers are not always following policy and procedure. In addition to that, I have seen what I feel to be civil rights violations on part of child advocates in the courts. They want to address this as a case-by-case basis, but the issues are systematic. Overall, DHS workers work very hard. Hello? Hello? DHS workers work very hard to appropriately serve the families of Philadelphia. However, we do ourselves no favor in not being open to constructive criticism. I ask you today to please, please pass this resolution. We are not asking that you shut DHS down. We understand that their job is very important, that children do need protection. But what we are asking is that you review DHS to ensure that they are following state and federal laws, because I can assure you, they are currently not following state laws. Our children mean the world to us. What would you do? What would you do if you were in our shoes? Would you fight for your children, or would you roll over and just let them push you around and push gag order on you and shut you up? Our children mean the world to us, and we will do everything to get our children back.
I would like to speak to you on Resolution Number 190779 in regards of establishing a special committee on child separation in Philadelphia to investigate child separation in Philadelphia's child welfare system.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is April McBride. Child separation and family alienation of any sort will always have a negative outcome. Reason being is that each and every child individual have been given to their families by God, in which a bond has been made for that child even before it leaves the mother's womb. That mother and family is the only person or people that the child is familiar with from birth, and that's their security blanket. When the child is ripped away from what he/she considers their security blanket, it becomes traumatizing, mental confusion, and anxiety sets in. This alone is abusive, and it becomes a part of an unforgettable history for them. With implementing Resolution 190779, there will be a major decrease on illegal child separation, foster care abuse, rapes, and murders, because finally, the individuals that are responsible will have to answer and be held accountable for their gross actions from the top to the bottom. As I sat in a DHS Oversight Board meeting this past August, I was very disturbed about the amount of funding that's distributed throughout DHS Child Welfare System that goes towards keeping children in foster care instead of appropriating those funds to help the families stay together as a unit. DHS fiscal budget for 2019, 2020 is proposing a budget of 386.2 million in state funding and 150.1 million in federal funding. In order to continue to request these funds and keep the funds coming, DHS agency there is a quota for them to meet. That quota can only be met by removing children from their families, and this has been executed by very evil, undermining, unfair practices of the so-called child protective services. DHS caseworkers are the ones purposely breaking this law and the ones guilty and need to be accountable and be shown that our children are not for sale to the highest bidder or biggest bonus checks or retaliation costs for parents standing up against DHS. My daughter, my daughter, I gave her a poster board and a marker. I asked her, I told her, I said, draw a picture. She didn't draw a picture, she wrote me this letter. Dear Mom, I miss you while I was in foster care and didn't like those mean foster parents. They are mean and said some mean things about you. I felt bad, so I said something in my head, and that wasn't nice at all. I love you. This came from my daughter, the one they took unproperly. Please pass this resolution.
Thank you, Mr.
My name is Nasir Kabres, and I want to speak on the revolution of 190779, the separation of the children from their families. When I heard of DHS, I thought there were people who helped children in abusive households. Little did I know, no, they weren't. And some of the social workers are so poisonous, they'll do anything to get a check in their hands. A lady by the name of Santa Pratt made our lives a living hell and broke my family up with her nefarious lies. She made my mom look like an abusive parent when I knew the truth about my mother. My momma always do her best as a single parent, making sure everything is great for our children, from making sure we eat, to have clothes, and having a warm, nice home to live in. However, when all of this began, I told the lady that, but she recited my word, my words, and said that my mother beat me. That shows that she just wanted to have something on her reports, but it was all lies. She even went as far as telling people that my mom refused to open the door when she had to come to talk to us, which is a lie as well, because she only came in there once. I thought the conversation was gonna be about my mother, but nope, it was questions like, how do you like your score, what do you wanna do in life? This all happened around the holiday seasons of 2018, which made the whole thing so depressing. My mom spent thousands of dollars for a lawyer for this oppression. We had many plans too, but they were ruined. Not being able to, not be able to spend Thanksgiving or Christmas with my sister broke my heart, and just seeing the pic, my parent, the presents sit there in the corner with the spirit in. The only time I would see my sister was at the center. I couldn't stand walking in there, it hurt me so bad. My sister literally had to spend, had to open her Christmas gift presents and get them at the center and not under a tray. It tore my spirit apart. Then to watch my mom have to have a fake smile to stay strong for us through all of this broke me even more. She tried, she tried to stay strong for her children, but eventually that came to an end because it started getting depressing. So at the beginning, my sister, so whatever's done in the dark come out in the light. My sister started to run away at the beginning from her so-called foster parents for several times trying to find us, saying that she misses us. So they moved her farther away, almost like forty-five minutes away, so she wouldn't be familiar with her surroundings. The acts of DHS is unfair, unfounded, inappropriate. Now, this is a part of our family's history and we'll never forget. Vote yes. But before I walk away, my question to you, mayor and the city of the council members, how would you feel if you felt my pain I had to go through, and what if a child or loved one had to go through this? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read the names of our next three speakers, please?
Yolanda Bryant, followed by Bridget Powell, followed by Vanessa Leary. Please approach the podium.
Please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Yolanda Bryant. I'm here on Resolution 190779. I want to thank David O. and Cindy Bash for, for believing in the families and doing this. I also want to know why Helen, Jim, and Sherrell Parker isn't here right now while we doing this resolution. First, I want to say, this resolution is not about nothing else but the children who are our future. A broken system that is set up for failure, that lives in an urban community, in the inner city. This resolution is for the poor families that suffer from poverty issues, the minorities that's living in the communities of all race. This is not just a one-color resolution or epidemic. It's purposely targeted for those individuals and societies that are weak, poor, undereducated, that's working minimum wage, the young and the old. This is what we call the wealthy and greedy, evil doers, evil doers, school-to-prison pipeline system. DHS started this program in the nineties. It was made up to protect our children, and as we all know now, is an organization called Cash for Kids. This resolution is not about a political preference, such as Democrats or Republicans. The purpose of this resolution is to protect our children and to intervene between families and unnecessary removals. How can they say they support the children when they sit back and allow corruption to happen to our children? How can you make a difference to a child if the advocate is still sponsoring foster homes instead of the parents to help them in and make better themselves from poverty issues? How can you change a broken system that continues to repeat the same cycle and build prisons and reform schools instead of building more local housing to help the poor and build better schools?
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, your two minutes are up. Thank you. Please, please state your name and proceed.
Bridget Powell. Good morning. I'm speaking about Resolution 170408. As a school nurse of twenty-three years and a high school nurse for seventeen years, I've seen my share of tobacco use among youth. This is important, but child separation is even bigger. First, I'd like to thank everyone who took time out of their schedule yesterday to talk to me about this important issue and/or their legislative aid. I come to your hearings and I listen attentively. In May, Councilman Jim said that there was a task force, so there was no reason to do a new one. I called to her office, I said, hey, when's the next meeting so I can come to? I was told it was in August. I told many parents, and in August, I asked them to come to the library, and at this time, I would like for everyone who came in August to raise their hand. I couldn't make that meeting, but I got a phone call as I was at a board meeting for the Girl Scouts, and they were like, there is no meeting. the Girl Scouts and they were like, "There is no meeting." So I contacted Helen Jim's office again. She says, "Oh, it was canceled because there wasn't enough people who RSVP." I says, "I've worked for the school district for 23 years. I know how to RSVP. There was no RSVP." So in September, I said, "Well, let me know when the next meeting is." In September, the meeting happened, September 19th. It wasn't about family separation, it was about residential placement like Glenn Mills. Yes, residential treatment is important, but that's not what we're asking for. I come to these hearings, I hear about resolutions, I don't see any other resolution getting voted out, but this one about child separation. We just want a fair process and we want what's best for the kids. My nephew stood up here, it was pretty hard for him. He hasn't seen his sister and I would just like to give out some pictures so that they could see that these children are in rooms and I also would like to give out the task force and to end by saying, nobody's listening, we need you to.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name and proceed.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Leary and I thank you for your time today. I'm here on resolution 190779 and the reason why it needs to be passed. People think that it's just DHS doesn't, it's completely perfect. There's no such thing as a completely perfect DHS agency. I've heard of, actually heard for myself of caseworkers saying, "Oh, I'm going to make sure that I'm not, you're not going to get your kids back." I've heard of parents completing every single goal and not getting their kids back. Myself, I've completed every goal. And you want to know where my kids are? Still in DHS care. You want to know why? I'm not getting them back because I am a survivor of domestic violence. I am a survivor of rape. And guess what? They're using that against me because they want to know if that trauma is that part of my reasoning for being a maternal parent. I'm not proper parenting. So I want to ask you this. There's two people not here today in council. There's Jim and Parker. Well, now she's here, but they were blocking this. So why are they blocking this? If there was nothing wrong with DHS? If your kids were in DHS care, what would you do to get your kids back? What would your limits be? My limits? I would never give up and I'm up for termination.
Thank you, ma'am. Your two minutes are up. Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next witnesses, our speakers?
Lillian English Hens. Followed by Joe Cox. Followed by Ms. Bennett. Please approach the podium.
Please state your name and proceed.
My name is Lillian English Hens.
Lower the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Lillian English Hens and I'm here to talk about the bill I want to talk about, And I'm here because this bill relates to separation of families, separation of children and families. We of Olney Charter High School have a family and I want to talk to you about it. And I want to thank Councilman Bass and Councilman Dow because they have listened to us, okay? The school district who allows children to come and swipe in and leave and walk the halls and the streets is the kind of school that Olney was years ago before a speeder took over our school. Now, the school district for no reason is trying to shut this school down. This school is the place where our children find food, shelter, love and care. And so therefore, I am here to tell you that I may not be no taller than five foot three, but I'm going to tell you right now, we are going to fight, we're going to fight this and we're going to fight it and we're going to fight it some more because you are, the national government is putting children in cages and separating families. The governor is against charter schools. I am for education, period.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Thank you.
And Olney is going to fight you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Joe Cox. I'm running for city council at large as a progressive independent. 190779. I am strongly in favor of this bill and in the creation of a special committee on child separation. People have been told there already is a committee, let's get it done. As an activist, I have been fighting against child separation for years. Shut down Burke's Detention Center while we're at it. It is clear there is a problem here in Philadelphia as we have the highest rate of child separation in the country. Have you been listening to all of the families that have been spoken already? We all want to come away with a real solution and this bill could be the first step. Also, let's see some action about these school conditions that should be illegal.
Mr. Decker, our next speakers. Talia Taylor. Ms. Taylor here? Here we go. Okay, please state your name and proceed.
Sister Talia Taylor. I'm here to also speak about bill 17909. Hold on one second, please. I just had it. My apologies, give me one second. There it goes. I thought I had to leave. Oh, I thought I had to leave. All right, so I'm here to speak about bill 190779 in favor of Councilman David O's resolution. My name is Sister Talia Taylor. I am vice, I'm president of the City of Dreams Coalition, vice chair of the Philadelphia Anti-Bonds Coalition. In all my years of coming to city council, I have never seen a resolution to form a special committee get defeated or prolonged so, so long. And this has been going on for too long. When it comes to our children, it should have been done and over with, period. But yet, Councilman David O's resolution to form a special committee to protect our children is being fought tooth and nails primarily by Parker and Jim. And it doesn't make sense, there should be no argument about protecting our children. We should be able to amend some things. I know we don't agree on everything, but the bottom line is protecting our children and what we all go through. We will be paying close attention to which way everyone votes today. And we are, and we already have a committee and I am, I am sitting on the board of the committee to hit the streets in all 10 districts to let everyone know and let your constituents know how much you care about those children. And I'll be out there with my teams as I do y'all petitions every year, every voting time, I'll be out there myself, making sure all the world leaders, all the committee people, everyone knows which way you vote today. What I can't swallow is how you protect, you won't protect our children, but you allow other convicted pedophiles like Emmanuel Bussie from Different Kind of Democrat to come here, roam the streets of city hall, lobbying for y'all politicians that I already made you aware of his abusive history, his deviant history he's already convicted for, yet and still, he still hasn't been given the chance to rape another child volunteering for somebody's election. I'm trying to wonder why.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Your two minutes are up. Please.
The next three speakers, James Thompson. James Thompson followed by Dan LaSalle. Followed by Ron White. Please approach the podium.
My name is James Thompson. I'm here for the changing the zoning designations and identifying that this area is a promise, a promise zone, but what about the zone that Only Charter High School falls in? My name is, again, my name is James Thompson and I'm the proud principal of Only Charter High School. Today, I'm here to speak to you on behalf of the positive impacts that Only Charter High School has had on our students and the surrounding community. First and foremost, I would like to formally invite each of you to visit our school, meet our staff and students, witness our classroom instruction and see firsthand what makes our school worthy of continuing to serve the community. I've been an educator for over 20 years and a school leader for more than 10. Over the years, I've transitioned to being, to being a staunch advocate for the rights of our students and the community we serve. The school district of Philadelphia launched its Renaissance School Initiative, a program designed to dramatically improve the student achievement in the district's lowest performing schools. Only is one of the schools that shifted from being run by the district to being run by a spirit while remaining a neighborhood school. Since the transition in 2011, a major shift in both climate and academic gains has been undisputable. It is evident that we continue to maintain a rate of success far higher than our neighboring schools serving, serving a familiar population. There have been drastic reductions in the rates of student suspension, serious incidents, making the school a much safer environment for our students to learn and grow. We serve 2,000 students and nearly 90% of them come every day and go to class. We have shifted the culture from students being fearful, fearful to a culture of students empowered to achieve great things. We currently house the largest English language learner and special education population in the city and we support every learner inclusive, inclusive of students who temporarily got off track and need additional support. They're trying to ram through a vote tonight to close Only Charter High School, but before you allow the district to shut us down, come and see what we have to offer our students. Thank you.
Please state your name and proceed.
Good morning. I'm here to speak about resolution 180669. For any person here who is concerned about-
State your name, please.
Dan LaSalle. I'm an administrator at Only Charter High School. For anyone concerned about the unethical practices of banks, financial literacy needs to be an incredibly important thing on your mind and there's no school that does it better than Only Charter High School. In fact, Market Watch has named us as the most innovative financial literacy program in the country. Just yesterday, I spoke with a representative from Andrew Yang, Democratic candidate for president, one of their representatives on the phone to discuss a national platform that copies our program. If the school district succeeds in closing us down, we will not be able to do what the person who began today's remarks said, allow Philadelphia to be a beacon for other cities in the entire country. Council members, I believe that your job is hard as many of ours and that when the school district engages in big decisions, it is very possible that they can make small errors by overlooking a school. To allow our school to not be renewed would crush out many innovative programs. Not only our financial literacy program, we have the second best debate team in the entire city in 2018. Do you know what it's like to be a neighborhood school? Go to citywide competitions and be like, "Oh, Central High, the top magnet school? Don't worry about them, they're easy." And then we beat them. Just this morning at 9:00 AM, the school district of Philadelphia has decided to proceed with a committee meeting, giving us less than 12 hours of notice. I really plead with you council members to have a conversation with whoever you can. If you allow our school to not be renewed, there are many innovative programs, very successful classrooms that will not be allowed to operate. Just on March 29th, 2019, the school district put out a report about how they have discrimination against closing minority-led charter schools more often. And here we are with that very same situation in front of us. I ask you to allow us to be continued to renewed.
Thank you. Our next, please, please state your name and proceed, please.
All right, my name is, put this up a little bit. My name is Ron White. I'm speaking in favor of bill number 190606. I want to thank councilpeople Sanchez, Clark, Parker and Blackwell and Johnson for introducing this bill. I do support the adequate governing of public property, but sidebar, I have to say, I did age out of foster care and people in my family have been in foster care. We need to get to the bottom of who is profiting off of separating our families, so I do support that as well. This is a quick sidebar. I also want to say that when we talk about vacant lots and vacant property, many people in our city live near vacant lots and vacant property that are filled with trash and litter, a lot of it plastic bags. A study came out from University of Pennsylvania saying that if you live near a vacant lot or vacant property with trash and litter, you are more likely to suffer from depression, feelings of inadequacy. We have to do something about this. A few weeks ago, thousands and thousands of youth were marching in the street for the climate strike for environmental justice. Our mayor is over in Europe right now, meeting with other mayors. He is talking about climate justice and climate issues. We, if we can't do the small things like banning plastic bags, how will we do the big things like tackling climate change? So we really have to get serious about fixing our environment. I want to thank everyone for listening to me right now and I hope that when the bill comes up regarding plastic bags and cleaning up our streets, that all council people take into consideration what our, what our neighbors are saying about having to go out every day and cleaning up this trash. It is really out of control. We have to do something. We need to fix this problem ASAP. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speakers?
The next three speakers, Salima Pace. Abona Higgins. And Desiree Whitfield. Please approach the podium.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Salima Pace. I'm the secretary treasurer of District 1199C and we just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Sherrell Parker and the others who have presented, excuse me, who have presented the, I apologize, who have presented to call the hearings to explore the service providers that are not honoring the contracts. We are simply asking that our members get paid. We are simply asking that the work that is put in, that they have the quality of work that they deserve and we are asking that you support this as this resolution makes its way through. And again, we want to thank Councilwoman Parker for bringing this resolution up today. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Desiree A Whitfield. This is part of my written statement to the Judicial Conduct Board about Judge Larish Young and I'm going to reiterate it for time. I wrote them because I met her long before she was a judge. She worked for the city solicitor's office.
Excuse me. What, what bill are you talking about?
I am, I am standing here for bill 190779. As I continue, I, I wrote them because I met Larish Young long before she was Judge Larish Young as a city solicitor, where she was writing illegal, falsified petitions to remove children from their homes. When I questioned Larish Young, who is now standing on the charges from the Judicial Conduct Board, her exact words to me was, "Us removing children, illegally removing children from their homes is the way we make money. It's my livelihood." I want, I want to put something else on record. I reported this to Reverend Allen Waller from Zion Baptist Church in which we both go. He sided with her because she is, she was a trustee of Zion Baptist Church. I heard earlier that there's going to be a way about Reverend Allen Waller. I protest that right now because if you didn't find it necessary to investigate about the illegal actions of one of your trustees, why would a way be named in your honor? I am standing here asking city council to stop accepting the calls from your mayor this morning and do the right thing and vote for bill 190779. If I had of drove a one-way street drunk, then my child- If I had have drove a one-way street drunk, then my child would have been taken from me, but you have people that sit right here in city council that has been drunk driving on a one-way street-
Thank you, ma'am. Your two minutes are up. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Great afternoon, everyone. My name is Obona Higgins, and I'm going to be speaking about, uh, 190703, uh, and ordinance amending section 20304 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Compensation for Members of the Board. You can read that. I'm in a, I'm in favor of that, absolutely, right? But check this out. The sanitation department, the, the trash men are up for a contract. They went six years without a contract. We don't need them not having a contract and treating our city like a garbage can like they do. So I'm, I'm in favor of this bill to deal with our environment. As you know, I'm Philly Green Man. I deal with the environment in this city, and you guys are really dropping the ball because everything that you're hearing is a result of a negative environment, a dirty environment, an environment where I had to come here stepping over trash. It's not acceptable. The second thing I want to add on is I want to congratulate Councilwoman Sanchez for standing up against indicted people on council. I agree with you, and I'm ashamed that the other councilmembers haven't stood up way before this. We have, and ironically, he's up here now dealing with, uh, overseeing this meeting. That money that's going out to people who are indicted, people who are being investigated, need to be going towards our children and towards these schools. As a retired teacher, I taught 30 years ago, starting 30 years ago, I stopped 22 years ago to raise my children, there were paint chips falling off the classroom walls when I was teaching there. There was paint chips falling off the classroom walls when I was a student at Dobbin's. What are you guys going to do? You need to be ashamed.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Time's up. Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next group.
Lynn Landis. Followed by Vilma Liper. Please approach the podium.
Please state your name and proceed.
Hi, my, my name is Lynn Landis, and I'm the co-founder of SafeStreetsPhilly.org, speaking on 160720. Just as there are rules for businesses such as where to locate a grocery store, there are also rules for residents. There is a homeless encampment of 17 tents a couple blocks away from City Hall on Vine Street between 16th and 17th Streets. The other night, there were 50 people sleeping outside of the convention center. Every day, we are calling about homeless sleeping in our neighborhood just five blocks away from here. We were told that the homeless are living on the streets of Philadelphia because federal courts have said they have the right to, but that's not what the court said. In Martin versus the city of Boise, the Ninth Circuit ruled that if there is no shelter provided by the city, only then could the homeless sleep on the streets. Yesterday, I received an email from the city's managing director who told me that the homeless have a constitutional right to sleep on the street, and they couldn't be forced into shelters. We have been trying to get the homeless off of the streets and into the shelters, thinking that available space was the deciding factor, but now we're being told it isn't. If the homeless want to sleep outside, that's their right. That is not what the court said, but that's the position of the city of Philadelphia. It's an invitation to chaos. The police are demoralized, businesses are frustrated, and residents are angry. The city is bragging that they are handling the problem by not arresting anyone. This carrot-and-carrot approach to law enforcement is not working. District Attorney Krasner is not doing his job, and other city officials have confused, have a confused notion of constitutional rights that ignores the rights of all residents to live in a city that protects their health, safety, and welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and proceed.
Vilma Liper. Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. Shalom. This is my granddaughter Chloe Liper. Her Hebrew name is Esbiya after her grandfather, who was an Israeli hero. I'm pleading here to the Jewish community to help me fight her case. Chloe is being sexually abused by her father. With the knowledge of DHS Family Court as well as the hospital, would you please give me attention? Some, please, some respect. I don't, I don't see any respect. You're talking in the background, and then you're going to cut off my- Again, Jewish girl. She is a Jewish girl. Being sexually molested by her father with the knowledge of DHS Family Court and the hospital where she was taking care of. The social worker was a relative of the father, and she, she slept under the rug. After two weeks of her being, after two weeks of her knowledge of her him liking child pornography, my baby was transferred to rehab where she was sharing a room with a teenager, and the father stayed a couple days with full knowledge of the, of, of his preference. Now, here is my granddaughter with us. Happy.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Your two, your two minutes are up, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, you didn't listen to me. I have a story to tell.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Ma'am, really. We've asked everybody to please sit here to the two-minute rule. Please, ma'am. I appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
Thank you. Okay, um, we now consider, consider today's bill consent agenda. I will ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, will you please now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda?
Bill Number 160026A, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Traffic Code. Chapter 12, 100 General Provisions by adding new definitions, and Chapter 12, 900 Parking Regulations and Felties by adding live performing arts venue to the entities exempt from paying fees for curb loading zone permits, and adding a new section entitled Performing Arts Priority Loading and Unloading Zones, providing for loading and unloading zones to allow easier access for performing artists to load in and load out at live performing arts venues around the city of Philadelphia. And Bill Number 190608A, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Misalinas, by adding a new chapter 21, 3100, entitled Reporting Settlements of Civil Actions, to establish a system of quarterly reporting and evaluation of means to reduce future liability. And Bill Number 190130, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner and the Procurement Commissioner to enter into a concession agreement with LoveLucky for the design, construction, management, and operation of a food and beverage concession in the Fairmount Park Welcome Center in John F. Kennedy Plaza, also known as Love Park. And Bill Number 190714, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commission of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with the Robert Nicoletti Family Trust for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 1813 through 25 Hilton Street. And Bill Number 181047, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Christian Street to South 24th Street and South 19th Street, Montrose Street to South 22nd Street, Catherine Street to South 23rd Street, Carpenter Street to South 15th Street, Banbury Street to Webster Street, South 16th Street to Catherine Street. And Bill Number 190101, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Webster Street and South 18th Street, Frittwater Street and South 20th Street, Christian Street between South Broad Street and South 16th Street, Carpenter Street and South 24th Street, Catherine Street and South 20th Street, Bainbridge Street between 24th Street and Schuylkill Avenue. And Bill Number 190552, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 2 of an Ordinance, Bill Number 170002, approved May 22, 2017, entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing Revision of Lines and Grades in a Portion of City Plan Number 269 by relocating the easterly house line of University Avenue from a point approximately 545 feet north of Currie Boulevard to a point approximately 236 feet further northwardly therefrom, by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill Number 190556, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 2 of an Ordinance, Bill Number 19, 120903, approved January 14, 2013, entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing Revision of Lines and Grades in a Portion of City Plan Number 156 by striking from the city plan Fort Street from Allegheny Avenue to Lippenkot Street, striking from the city plan Lippenkot Street from Fort Street to its terminus westwardly therefrom, reserving and placing on the city plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes within the lines of Lippenkot Street being stricken, placing on the city plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes extending from the intersection of Fort Street and Lippenkot Street eastwardly to the intersection of American Street and Lippenkot Street, and placing on the city plan a right-of-way, by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill Number 190561, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Frank Strawbridge to Own and Maintain a Sign Anchored into the Sidewalk in the Public Right-of-Way at 801 Market Street. And Bill Number 190609, entitled An Ordinance Establishing No Parking and Towaway Regulations on the East Side of Academy Road from Grant Avenue to Glen Street. And Bill Number 190642, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Cedar Avenue and South 46th Street, South 44th Street between Walnut Street and Baltimore Avenue, Osage, Osage Avenue between South 42nd Street and South 53rd Street. And Bill Number 190643, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Larchwood Street between South 49th Street and South 46th Street, Irving Street and South 53rd Street, Upland Street and South 50th Street, South 51st Street and Market Street, South 54th Street between Cedar Avenue and Catherine Street. And Bill Number 190646, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Stanton Street and Frederick Street, Warden Drive and Henry Avenue, Midvale Avenue and the Oak Road, Calumay Street and Crescent Street to Ridge Avenue, Stokely Street and Midvale Avenue, Vaux Street and Colter Street. And Bill Number 190647, entitled An Ordinance Establishing a No Parking Home Regulation on Drexel Road from City Avenue to Upland Way, both sides. And Bill Number 190648, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Wynwood Road and Malvern Street, North 52nd Street and Overbrook Avenue, Market Street and North 57th Street, Oxford Street and North 59th Street, Edgewood Street and Market Street, Fraser Street and Market Street, Salford Street and Market Street, North 63rd Street and Arch Street. And Bill Number 190656, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Dickinson Street from Moyamensing Avenue to South 5th Street, Greenwood Street, Greenwood Street from South 6th Street to South 4th Street, Orton Street and South Front Street. And Bill Number 190657, entitled An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Reed Street and South 3rd Street, Federal Street and South 5th Street, Cross Street and 6th Street, Mountain Street and South 5th Street. And Bill Number 190705, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Sidewalk Sales, by adding an exception to a prohibited vending location. And Bill Number 190703, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 2304 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Compensation for Members of Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Councils to Provide for Compensation for the Members of the Environmental Justice Advisory Commission, and amending Section 213002, entitled Environmental Justice Advisory Commission with Respect to Membership, Timing, and Reporting, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills having been read on two different days, the question for each bill now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll. And upon being called, each councilmember shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman Dom?
All bills.
Councilman Green?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman Greenlee?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman Jones?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman O.
Aye, on all bills.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye, on all bills.
Councilman Taubinberger?
Aye, on all bills.
Council President Clark?
Aye, on all bills. The majority of all members having voted in the affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please proceed.
Resolution Number 190769, entitled a resolution also naming the 5,000 block of Baltimore Avenue Representative Al Dumas Boulevard in honor of State Representative Al Dumas and his dedication to public service, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Aging to hold public hearings examining solutions to prevent the ongoing displacement of senior citizens with fixed incomes due to rising rental costs, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak on this resolution.
Move, it's been moved in probably second. All those, I'm sorry.
I'd like to speak on the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many districts, if not all districts in the city of Philadelphia, are experiencing a flood of multi-unit properties that are coming of age, that have had some type of federal or state assisted financing. During those times of financing, there were rent restrictions put on a lot of those residents. So in a case in one of the buildings in my district, seniors had a $400 a month mortgage. As these agreements come of age and some of the owners opt not to renew any new relationship with HUD, we're finding some building owners that are opportunists, saying that we'd like to renovate, go a different direction, and move some of these existing residents out so that we can upgrade, quote, and be able to charge market rate. I am not a socialist. I want people to feel free to move their properties in certain directions, but not at the expense of people who have lived in facilities, sometimes for decades, sometimes never being late, never missing a month's rent. So the issue for some of those residents is facing that kind of capitalism. Second part of it is average, median income. And what that means is that some people's rents are calculated on that average, median income for the city. So when people with means move in in their relative geographic area, that average, median income is counted against some of the pensions that were frozen because they're not going up, and so they find themselves in buildings that we helped the owners get, helped them to find funding for. Those shovels are in our respective offices. Now, retired civil servants, some police officers- Now, retired civil servants, some police officers are finding themselves having to move out of those same facilities and move with their children because they can't afford the rent increases that are being proposed. We hope that this hearing will shed light on that, and not to stifle, stifle capitalism, but to offer alternatives to gentrification. And so I look forward to this, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the dedicated and loyal service of Romelo L. Diaz Jr. to the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green on behalf of Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair is going to recognize Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you, I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Rebecca Rutstein for her dedicated service through art to the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green on behalf of Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair, one more time, we'll recognize Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, Councilwoman.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you very much, Council President, I have to take leave, and I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That shall be reflected in the record.
And a resolution calling for a, and a resolution calling for a fair contract for commercial office cleaners and building service workers in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings regarding service providers and employers honoring existing and prior worker contract agreements, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the 95th anniversary of the Curtis Institute of Music, its part in training the world's finest musicians, and for its contributions to the rich cultural fabric of the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold a hearing regarding the reconstruction work on Interstate 95 and the entire revive I-95 plan, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the establishment of a special committee on child separation in Philadelphia to review child separation in Philadelphia's child welfare system and develop recommendations to ensure compliance with state child protective services law to protect children and due process rights of families and prevent the unnecessary breakup of families, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Okay, okay. We got, we got, all right. We have, we have, excuse me, excuse me, we have, we have a little, we have a little more, folks, folks, we have, we have a little more business to conduct.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. All right, all right, all right. Okay, 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 all right, let's have it, let's have it a little quiet. All right, okay. Ma'am, ma'am, you can go in the hallway. Hey, hey, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, all right, folks are excited, okay, but we have business to conduct, I'm gonna ask you all to, please quiet, ma'am, ma'am, you go. All right, okay. Before we, before we move to our adjournment, uh, want to do a couple of things, I want to do a couple of things, first I would like to, um, on behalf of City Council, we would like to acknowledge and wish our good friend and colleagues, what, 36th birthday, uh, happy birthday, Councilman Squilla? What'd you say, somebody got the number wrong? Uh, all right, well, it's around there, all right, you'll take 36 today, Councilman, thank, uh, congratulations and, uh, happy birthday to you. Uh, now I want to do a little bit of business on, on my behalf, so, um, as you know, one of the things that we've been able to do, uh, is have some very, very special people work for us in the City Council of Philadelphia, um, pretty much all of them have gone on to a number of things, some of them have stayed here, but I, we're really proud about, uh, the staff, the people that actually do the work that make us look good, uh, on a consistent basis, rarely do they make us look bad, right? But, um, I just want to, uh, just acknowledge a couple of guys that, uh, and where's Will at? He's somewhere conducting business, I almost say his name, huh? He's somewhere conducting business? All right, so as you all know, um, some of you know, um, I'm gonna call Will Carter's name first, uh, Will Carter has been here, uh, for a long, long time, actually came to work for me before I was council president, and we had that office across the hall, and, um, he was, uh, a person I look forward to seeing every day, long, hard-working young man, uh, has grown to be a little older, uh, young man, but he has been an awesome, awesome addition. Is he coming? Yeah, Carter, you mean you? Yeah, so everybody knows Will and everybody loves Will, and Will has been a, a person that has, has been an awesome, awesome, uh, addition to, uh, the City Council of Philadelphia. And Will, uh, we just want to say, man, you know, we really appreciate what you've done, you've grown, uh, grown to be one of my little brothers, you know, giving you, hope I've given you good counsel, uh, over the years, I guess I did, because you married with two children now, so, so, so you, you did, you did the right thing. But, uh, Will, we just want to say on behalf of council, man, thank you so much for your contribution. Uh, Will will now, uh, has actually started, uh, he's going to serve in the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, uh, Vice President of Local Government Advocacy and Engagement, so he will continue to be around, and he'll be moving the needle, uh, he has some very optimistic perspective on what he's going to be able to do, uh, from that side of the equation, uh, we wish you well, we hope you're very successful, so Will, congratulations, man, and thank you for your service. Jeffrey Young, all right, so another young individual, uh, Jeffrey, actually, I remember Jeffrey came into office when I was, again, around in 484, and he was the, you were the youth, what were you, my youth commission?
Earlier than that.
Earlier than that?
Will's high school intern.
Oh, wow, wow, wow. Man, Will, I didn't even know you had an intern back then. All right, well, so Jeffrey's, um, has been a, a person, man, that I've seen grown, um, you know, from his early years, early, early years, and I, I just want to say how proud I am of him, um, for the awesome work that he's done here as a legislative council. But more importantly, the work that he's done out in the neighborhood, because everybody knows Jeff, and when they can't remember his name, they say, yeah, they got with the dreadlock that worked for you, you know, oh, that must be Jeffrey, so, Jeffrey, uh, man, thank you, um, appreciate, man, all you've done, again, wanting to be my little, little brothers, you know, uh, hopefully, you know, you, you've obviously learned a lot and, and got a lot of respect for the work you've done. Jeffrey is, uh, now going on, uh, he is now in private practice, uh, he has joined the Legends Group LLC as a partner specializing in a variety of real estate matters, including land use zoning, code enforcement, state planning, all that good stuff, whatever somebody's willing to pay the firm for, Jeffrey's prepared to do it. So Jeff, uh, I want, Jeff, so this next guy, Jeremy Grabworth, so Jeremy, so Jeremy was this guy that kind of came along and, you know, this program that we had, uh, fellows, right, fellows program, yeah, because we, we wanted a little bit more fancier than interns, you know, that sound like, oh, it's fellows, you know, it's like, whatever, right? So, so Jeremy was a guy that came along and, uh, very interesting young individual, uh, not from the city of Philadelphia, uh, but figured out a way to be here and ended up going, going to the local schools, and Jeremy was a guy that, um, he would end up in some interesting places, because a lot of times people are new to the city and the neighborhoods, they kind of like, well, do I have to go over there? Jeremy didn't care, right? I see him everywhere, and it wasn't necessarily doing work hours, you know what I mean? Jeremy was everywhere, and he got to know the people in the neighborhood, and he got, the people in the neighborhood got to know him, and he, he was a really, really great addition as he moved from the fellows program up to being a, a member of the council staff, um, and he did some great work, uh, got a lot of friends, a lot of people, uh, look forward to calling him because he always followed through, regardless of what the subject matter was, and made sure, uh, that he followed through, uh, to, to ensure that people got really good service. Um, Jeremy has actually had some interesting, um, Jeremy continues to be in the Temple Law School, but now he has been offered and accepted an internship position in the chambers of Judge Michael A. Ship of the U.S. District Court for the District of New Jersey. So I, I'd just like to, you know, take a little personal props for, you know, training them well, all these guys, all right? But, uh, Jeremy, thank you, man, we really appreciate, you know, what you've done, uh, your work in the neighborhood and your willingness to serve, and, uh, to all three of you guys, man, awesome, awesome. Uh, we'll continue to see you all again, and, and please do not change your phone number, all right, because we will be calling you, all right? Um, so guys, thank you all so much, and we really appreciate what you've done, and we look forward to many, many more successes. Thank you all. We're gonna be having, what are we having, cake or something? 491, so anybody wants cake? What'd you say? Shake Shack? Huh? Oh, no. I got hooked on the Shake Shack thing. Um, we're gonna be having refreshments in 491 for all of you all, and then I understand, Will, you're gonna be actually having, you, a couple of you all are gonna be having another little, little real party. All right, Maison, all right, when is that? The night? Five o'clock tonight at Maison? Uh, you're gonna really be getting it in, okay. All right, well, guys, thank you again so much, thank you so much for your support, we really appreciate what you've done for us. Okay, um, any speeches on behalf of, behalf of the minority? And speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll be very brief, um, during the public comment, um, the name of, uh, the senior pastor of the E. Non Tabernacle Baptist Church was mentioned, and it was attributed to another church and for the benefit of the public, and I'm proud to have been a member of E. Non Tabernacle Baptist Church long before it grew into what it has become in its new house on 2800 block of Sheltonham Avenue, uh, been a member since I was on Coulter Street, sitting in the basement, having service, watching it on the screen. But I just want to, for the public's benefit, to note that Reverend Dr. Allen E. Waller is the senior pastor of E. Non Tabernacle Baptist Church. Thank you so very much for the record.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, there being no additional speeches, chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Yes, 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 Mr. President, I want to extend my personal congratulations to these young men who indeed represent the future, and to congratulate you for having a bench, it matters.
All right.
Secondly, I want to remind everyone that immediately after council and the caucus film, the Philadelphia Orchid Project will do a briefing, and so you can enjoy lunch with us and then enjoy, uh, the fattening delicious desserts with the members of your team. Uh, with that, I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, October 17th, 2019 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second, the council stand adjourn until Thursday, October 17th, 2019, 10:00 a.m., all in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, thank you all very much.